If we can start getting to our seats, I know I was told that the school clock is not quite accurate, and I'm sure they'll be fixing that pretty soon tomorrow, but it's about eight or 10 minutes slow, so. No, because I've got, well, I've actually got seven and a half, so it's, eh, it's there. We're supposed to start at seven, so. Okay, Jeff.
Do you want me to table it?
No, he should come and table it. He should come and table it if he's gonna.
That just take, that just takes it off the, okay. We'll do that.
Nobody brings it forward, the motion's dead anyway.
They could. Is someone here knowing they're gonna do that? Well, what will happen, it won't even get moved and it'll never come out. All right, well, then I'll tell the moderator we're gonna table the article. All right. I hope, hope you're. Okay, I got, I got it. I know. Okay. I don't, I don't mean to upset you, I'm just trying to make sure you know what's going on. I'm sorry? What was that? I'm sorry.
Thank you for coming to Town Meeting 2014. I wanted to say welcome, and I hope everybody had a really nice Mother's Day. It was a beauty. You deserved it. If you're not a registered voter, you do need to sit in the bleachers, because when there's a reason to count, it avoids confusion, so I appreciate your cooperation. Every year, I do point out that we will move along in a respectful manner due to reaching 10 o'clock. As I say usually, it's late for those with young children at home and for our seniors. I'm understanding this more and more myself each year. If we have a long way to go, we will have to reconvene on another night to finish, and I know most of you here would rather not do that. As some new town members have reminded me in the past, it's easy for us to assume that we all know who was up here. So if I can take a minute just to introduce those that are instrumental in this town meeting and most of the day-to-day running of Hatfield. We have Treasurer Greg Winters. Where are you at, Greg? There you are. Town Clerk Lydia Zisch. Assistant Treasurer Town Quirk, Clerk Edwina. I don't think Edwina, there you are. Selectman Jeff Boyle. Jan Adamsky. And Ed Lesko. On the Finance Committee, we have Darryl Williams, Chairman. Sean Berry. Veronica Carroll. Fran Gooden. And Paul Fisher. Superintendent of Schools, is he here? There you go, John Robert. DPW Director Phil Genovese. Town Administrator Paul Boudreau. We have Mr. Lyons here as our Town Accountant. And this year for the first, we have Greg Miao, who is from a law firm in Worcester. Our Town, our Town Council isn't able to make it. Our Town Hall Secretaries are Kai Ino and Wilma Davis. So I think I've covered most that you would need to know for any of the, any of the new people in town, and I welcome you. Now, a lot of careful consideration, time, and input has been spent on these articles presented here tonight for your consideration, and they've been taken by some quite dedicated people during a lot of meetings all year. I would like to say our budget is secure, our roads are good, our school is in envy, and we're quite safe. Hopefully, we're seeing a bad financial time fading away. Our town's been fortunate compared to many others. These posted meetings during the year serve a very important point, to explain and discuss the details of ideas and issues to help each board craft a proposal to present the townspeople as a whole, an item to either vote for or against tonight. With this said, I ask here, all of you here, to be mindful of why we're here, not to delve into such details that have already been discussed at great length, but to consider whether we as a town approve or not each article as it's presented to the best of our abilities. With some discussion, it helps explain a little bit more, or to raise some new information that came about since these meetings were not known. In no way do we ever mean to show any disrespect to this process, but rather to respect your time and patience. If we seem to be going off into specifics that have already been discussed at length, I will be polite to try to close off and go on to the next question. Otherwise, we'll be here for more nights than any of us have the patience to sit through. I also ask department heads and committees that if there are no inquiries, please try to restrain from giving a very detailed explanation, as it's already been done. This is in no way meant to be rude or condescending, but rather to allow the process to move forward if there are no questions to the article. Obviously, you did your homework and educated the townspeople during the year on your very important article. So tonight, we decide on, on that homework. So thank you. And let's move to Article One. Mr. Boyle. Article Two. Article Two, pardon me.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Boyle.
I move we take up Article Two.
Article, motions are made and seconded to take up Article Two as written in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Boyle.
I move the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to apply for, accept, and expend without appropriation any state or federal grants or gifts and awards from any public or private source that become available in fiscal year 2015.
Motion's been made and seconded as read. Is there any discussion? These first three, for some of the new people in town, these first three or four articles are generally put together because we, like the first one allows elections to be held. The second and third ones are for to-get highway money and state monies, so they're pretty much each year exactly the same thing. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Adamsky.
Move to take up Article Three.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article Three in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Adamsky.
I move the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to apply for, accept, and expend without appropriation any state or federal grants or gifts and awards from any public or private source that become available in fiscal year 2015.
Motion's been made and seconded as read. Is there any discussion? These first three, for some of the new people in town, these first three or four articles are generally put together because we, like the first one allows elections to be held. The second and third ones are for to-get highway money and state monies, so they're pretty much each year exactly the same thing. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Adamsky.
Move to take up Article Three.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article Three in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Adamsky.
I move the town vote to authorize its treasurer to enter into a compensating balance agreement or agreements for fiscal year 2015 pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 53 F of the Mass General Laws.
Second. You've heard the motion made and seconded on Article Three. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Lesko.
I move we take up Article Four.
The motion's been made and seconded to take up Article Four is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Lesko.
I move the town vote to accept and expend $248,556 under the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 90, Section 34, Clause 2A, and to authorize Board of Selectmen to enter into a contract with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Department of Public Works, and to authorize the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, to borrow in anticipation of 100 percent reimbursement of said amounts.
You've heard the motion made and read in Article Four. Is there any discussion? Michael?
Mike Cahill, North Street. I'm gonna ask the perennial question. We're gonna receive $249,000. Is there a plan to expend this money, and if so, will we be spending it all?
Sure. Phil, pull the mic a little closer to you.
Yes, there is. Can you hear me? Yes, there is a plan. Of course, it's in our five-year capital plan. I'll just list a couple of the streets that we're gonna do. We're gonna do Valley Street, South Street, Pantry Road. I don't think that we're gonna spend it all. I like to leave a little bit in reserve in case we have an emergency during the course of the year. That's a source of funding for that emergency.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Boyle.
I move we take up Article Five.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article Five is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Boyle.
I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $2,318,019, and to meet said appropriation, authorize the treasurer to borrow under and consistent with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Sections Seven or Eight, and/or any other source of authority, for the purpose of paying costs for the roof and window replacement project at Smith Academy located at 34 School Street, Hatfield, Mass, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto, which proposed repair project would materially extend the useful life of the school and preserve an asset that otherwise is capable of supporting the required educational program and for which the district may be eligible for a school construction grant for the Massachusetts School Building Authority. Set amount to be expended at the direction of the Hatfield School Committee that the town acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA, and any project cost the district incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the district and its member municipalities. Provided further than a grant that the district may receive from MSBA for the project shall not exceed the lesser of, one, 50.58 percent of eligible approved project cost as determined by MSBA, or two, the maximum total grant amount determined by the MSBA, and that the amount of borrowing authorized by the district shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the project funding agreement that may be executed between the district and the MSBA.
Second. You've heard the motion read and seconded on Article Five. Is there any discussion? Michael? Okay.
Larry Grossman, King Street. This is, of course, the project I think we mentioned at the last town meeting of replacing the windows of this building. And I don't think anyone would argue with this, that project. It's just the funding, there's nothing in here, I don't understand what happens if we don't get any money from the state, is one question. And then secondly, there was a handout on this ivory paper, and it anticipates that of the balance beyond the, the MSBA reimbursement, that school choice would contribute half a million dollars, and that the taxpayers would pay $275,000. My question is, I looked through the financial documents here, and I could not find anywhere where the balance of school choice money was and how they arrived at the $517,000, and I wonder why, just in one of the candidate statements, it sounds like we get that kind of money every year. Why can't school choice just pay for the whole thing? And especially if there's no money coming from MSBA. I'd be concerned about how this would really be funded, and if in fact there is no money from the state, does this require an override, or where would the balance, how would we pay it?
You wanna get it to school? By the way, if you guys on the, there's only four of you on the benches, if you wanna take some of these chairs and pull them to the side, that's perfectly okay. All right.
Sorry about that.
We all need a little laughter, it's okay.
I'm short. Kathy Engelhardt, Chair of the School Committee. I'll try to explain this.
Kathy, can you talk a little bit closer to the mic?
Sorry.
Thank you.
So the way this process was, we submitted our application to the state, to School Building Authority. They determined that the estimated cost of the project would be the $2.3 million. Normally, what happens is a municipality will take that amount to town meeting and have it approved. We went one step further and came to you tonight with an actual bid in hand. We know exactly what this project will cost us, which is the $975 on your handout. So the total project with all the other costs is 1.4 million, 1,494, 294. The state has already committed to reimbursing us the 50.8 percent, which is 701, and the school has pledged to provide 517 out of our school of choice funds. School of choice funds are not, they're a fluid amount of money that we use. We use a half a million dollars every year to supplement our operating budget, and we use it for other projects, other capital projects, and this year, we are pledging the $500,000 for this capital project. So the balance left for the town is only 275. I happen to think that's an excellent bargain for the town of Hatfield to get a brand-new roof and all exterior doors and windows.
Okay. Any other questions?
I answered it.
Okay, we'll move the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Two, this is two-thirds, so all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Adamsky.
Move to take up Article Six.
The motion's been made and seconded to take up Article Six as written in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Adamsky.
I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into a renewable energy purchase and/or net metering credit purchase agreements, including solar energy and related net metering credits for terms of more than three years, and to take all actions necessary to implement and administer such agreements.
Motion's been made and seconded on Article Six. Is there any discussion? Okay. Do you wanna talk on it or not? There's...
I guess I'd just be curious, I haven't followed this. Is this through Hampshire County? Is this the deal there that they're offering the communities? Could you give us some idea how the net metering credit, because we don't own solar for the town, where are we getting a net metering credit? How is this being applied to our electric bill?
Is Fran here? Fran Gooden? Yep. Do you wanna talk on that? Oh, he needs a microphone. Is his mic on?
Article Six does not commit us or obligate us to do anything, but rather gives the Board of Selectmen an opportunity to explore a number of programs, in this case, brokered by the Hampshire Council of Government, for the purpose of purchasing solar energy credits for a term of more than three years. And you might ask, well, why do we have to have a contract for more than three years to participate in a program of this sort? And the answer to the question is that developers, in response to Chris's, Chris's question, you know, who's generating these solar credits, the solar credits are developed, or are produced by developers, and in this case, developers that would be identified by the Hampshire Council of Government, and would give us the opportunity to purchase these solar credits. A credit is a unit of electricity that you can buy. And the developers, in order to attract funding to build these projects, have to be able to show a long-term commitment, and that's the reason why if the Board of Selectmen, after looking at this and evaluating this and determining whether this was a good deal for the town, would have to be willing and able to commit to a contract of a term longer than three years. Hadley has just gone through a long, drawn-out process of researching this possibility, and they, in 2013, signed on to purchase solar credits and have contracts ranging from five to 20 years.
Any other discussion?
Fran, I think, and this is the Hampshire County program, which is, I just wanna speak to this. This is a very excellent program, and it, and the beauty of this is we're buying electricity at a fixed cost for over three years, and if you're smart, you're gonna wanna go as long as you can, because electricity is going up at a little over 2.17 percent a year right now, and it easily could go higher. So for the community, especially if you're doing financial planning, if you know what your electricity is gonna cost for the next 10 years, this is an excellent program. I speak highly of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Lesko.
I move we take up Article Seven.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article Seven as in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Lesko.
I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw. Section 5.3.5, Procedure for Review and Referral of Special Permit Applications as printed on the town warrant.
You've heard the motion made and seconded in Article Seven. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Boyle.
I move the, I move we take up Article Eight. Excuse me. Excuse me. I move to table.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded to table Article, Article Eight. There's no discussion on a tabling. We just vote to accept tabling it or not. All those in favor of tabling Article Eight signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Articles tabled.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Adamsky.
Move to take up Article Nine.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article Nine is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Adamsky.
I move the town vote to amend the zoning map of the town of Hatfield by changing Map 216, Parcells 3, 4, and 5 at 117 West Street from the current rural residential to light industrial.
You've heard the motion read in Arti, read and seconded in Article Nine. Is there any discussion? Did you say 117 West Street? She was just checking. That's correct. That's correct. Okay. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Lesko.
I move we take up Article 10.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 10 as in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Lesko.
I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw 9.632 regarding solar-electric cooperative as follows. In the heading, delete "as of right sitting" and, in the second sentence, delete "allowed in all zones," and insert "subject to special permit with site plan approval and/or site plan review and other requirements of this section," and delete the word "but" following this phrase.
You've heard the motion made and seconded in Article 10. Is there any discussion? Chris?
At the 2012 town meeting, we overwhelmingly voted a proclamation that our town would receive 50 percent of our electricity from solar power by the year 2020. It was in that spirit of this proclamation that the Energy Committee added your right as town, for townspeople and taxpayers, to be able to have your own solar electric installations, whether on your roof or ground-mounted, without special permit or site review, as part of the 2013 solar zoning bylaws. When Hatfield joined Hartford, Hingham, Situate as part of the first solarized mass program, the Energy Committee learned that, on average, only 23 percent of buildings were properly sited or had sufficient construction to accept solar panels. As a solution, the town of Hartford helped many small groups of residents by setting up nonprofit cooperative installations, either on one member's roof or in properly-sited open areas. Each member under the Green Community Act would receive their share of electric net-metered credits, along with equal share of installation incentives and tax credits, in just the same manner as though the solar installation is installed on their own program, own property. Because of these co-ops, it would, it would likely be very, they would be likely very small and required to be owned collectively by town residents. The Town Energy Committee proposed that these solar installations be "as of right," just as the same as an individual-owned system, and not have to go through the large expense and months of time in hearings that medium and large commercial farms now require. Although it was not brought up at the public hearing by the Planning Board, a letter from the Attorney General's Office dated November 25, 2013, noted that changing the bylaw was, that was submitted and voted last year, allowing solar co-ops "as of right" citing would run afoul of Mass General Law 48, Section 3, especially if a solar co-op was for not-for-profit, which is, would be likely, and therefore would be exempt from zoning. The letter goes on and recommends that the use table reflect this to comply with state law, which it does not as proposed. Finally, there is the state law itself. Mass General Law 48, Section 3, 9th paragraph, reads as follows. "No zoning ordinance or bylaw shall prohibit or unreasonably regulate the installation of solar energy systems or the building of structures that facilitate the collection of solar energy, except where necessary to protect the public health, safety, or welfare." The Planning Board revised bylaws, proposed, requires a special permit in several districts in the use table for solar, solar co-ops. This unreasonably regulates and is in conflict with the state law because the Planning Board can...
Chris, Chris, excuse me, you've already done two pages.
Hold on, I'm almost done.
Okay.
Can, can vote to disapprove a cooperative solar energy application for any reason whatsoever. So I ask you to vote no on the proposed changes to the solar bylaw as offered by the Planning Board.
Okay. Is there any other discussion on this? Bob?
I'm Bob Bartlett, I'm a member of the Planning Board. And this, the, the bylaw we passed last year was somewhat contradictory, and this, and it ties in with, with the Table of Use in Article 11, which is really a correction. What was submitted to the AG was not what was, was voted on at our public hearing. The wrong document got submitted, and the AG approved it. So therefore, the, this "as of right" citing was in contradiction to the Table of Use, which is in Article 11. I also saw the letter from the Attorney General, reference to Chapter 48, Section 3, Solar Access, and where it says that the, "No zoning ordinance or bylaw shall prohibit or unreasonably regulate the installation of solar energy systems." They could not define what unreasonable regulations were. Site plan review, special permit, really gives the Planning Board, it's not saying we're not gonna allow it, it says that we, we can take a look at where it's cited, because generally, a cooperative system could be a larger system if three or four or five neighbors are tying it together. So we wanna see where it's going and allow the neighborhood to see that before it's constructed. So the state, through the Attorney General, cannot define unduly regulate. Again, special permit, site plan review, doesn't mean the Planning Board is gonna deny it, just gives us the opportunity to look at it.
Thank you. Is there any other issues? Paul, I'll call on you in just a second.
Larry Grossman, King Street. I'd like to just boil this down a little. Article 10 and Article 11 are very related. One is the narrative, one is the chart of use. I think what we voted on a year ago is very simple. The second category, the cooperatives, are very small groups of people, often a few neighbors, that for one reason or another cannot put a solar system in their house, individual houses. They may have facing the wrong way, they may have, like I do, a slate roof, but I'd like to team up with a couple neighbors and put in a small field, and we could buy, we could generate solar energy. That's all this second line is that we're talking about in Article 10 and Article 11. It is not the two-acre-plus fields that we've heard about for a year here. It is not the two-acre-plus fields that we've heard about for a year here. It's not the giant, large, five-hundred-kilowatt systems. We're talking about a relatively small system, often in your backyard, that might...you might team up with your neighbor, and you're limited to how much solar energy you could generate, two-hundred percent of your needs. So my...I rise today to say that I'm against regulation of any further government involvement if I want to do a small cooperative like this. I thought that's what we voted on a year ago. It passed by...they counted us, and now it seems to me they're coming back with trying to get a second bite at the apple to change it where we require site plan review or special permit, which costs hundreds of dollars. It's not a little process to get a special permit. I was on the Planning Board for five years. It costs money, you often have an attorney, and it takes a while. So I rise in support of voting against Article X, Article eleven. Leave it alone. It's been in place for a year, the Attorney General approved it, and I'd like it to stay that way. Thank you.
Paul? I'll get you in a second.
Paul Dostal, Planning Board. Just like to remind our voters that the Zoning Act was enacted in 1975 by the state of Massachusetts to facilitate, encourage, and foster the adoption and modernization of zoning ordinance and bylaws by municipal governments and to establish standardized procedures for the administration and promulgation of municipal zoning laws. It furthers that goes on to state, "The purposes and objectives can be found in Section two A of Chapter eight oh eight and include but are not limited to the following: to lessen congestion in the streets, conserve health, to secure safety from fire, flood, panic, and other dangers, provide adequate light and air, prevent overcrowding of land, to avoid undue concentration of population, to encourage housing for persons of all income levels, to facilitate the adequate provision of transportation, water, water supply, drainage, sewage, schools, parks, open space, and other public requirements, to conserve the value of land and buildings, including the conservation of natural resources, the prevention of blight and pollution of the environment, to encourage the most appropriate use of land throughout the city or town, including consideration of the recommendations of the master plan and adopted by the Planning Board in a comprehensive plan, if any, and the regional planning agencies, and to preserve and increase amenities by the promulgation of regulations to fulfill said objectives." Definition of zoning. This is from the Massachusetts General Laws. "Zoning ordinances and bylaws adopted by cities and towns to regulate the use of land, buildings, and structures to the full extent of the independent constitutional powers of cities and towns to protect the health, safety, and general welfare of their present and future inhabitants." So that's all we're doing here, is having...try to have some rules and regulations, as Mr. Bartlett pointed out, so that we can plan for our future, our children's future, our grandchildren's future, so we don't have various projects, whether it be a solar project, an industrial project, a cement plant, or whatever you have in the town of Hatfield by following what the state of Massachusetts has dictated. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. One more, and then we'll move this. And for some of you new people, when people come up to the mic, I generally ask them to state their name and the street they live on, not the house number, but the street they live on, so you have a picture of where people are coming from.
Stan Pitchko, Prospect Street. This is not a second bite at the apple. This is exactly what Bob was talking about in regards to some housekeeping. This is making right what happened last year. The incorrect document was submitted. This had all been vetted out through a public process. There were a lot of many meetings, there was many meetings that had taken place on this particular subject, and there was also a public forum in regards to vetting out exactly what was going into that document. To vote this down tonight is actually contradictory to what was already done last year in previous meetings. So I would recommend that we make this whole and make it right and vote the changes, because that's what the people voted on last year, not this. It's unfortunate that the wrong document got sent to the Attorney General, but we need to make it right, and this is just some housecleaning. Thank you.
Okay. So I'd like to move the question. All those in favor of Article X, that is correct, we're on? All those in favor of Article X signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
Article carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Two-thirds?
Two-thirds.
Okay. Let's do this again, two-thirds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
Motion carries. You want to do a count?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Louise is our conscience, so I appreciate that. All right. If there's any nays. So all those in favor, please stand. We have our two counters. I'll give her my count. I stay unbiased. You can...she'll count the head table. Paul is counting that side. Bill's counting that side. We've already...I do this every year. All those opposed, please stand. Ninety-three in favor, twenty opposed. The motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Boyle.
I move we take up Article eleven.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article eleven in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Boyle.
I move the town vote to amend zoning bylaws. Table of Use, Section three point oh, subsection six point two four, under notes, by deleting the words, is as-of-right citing.
You've heard the motion made and seconded under Article eleven. Is there any discussion? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Adamski.
I move to take up Article twelve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article twelve in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Adamski.
I move the town vote to amend the zoning bylaws by deleting entirely the present version of that portion of the bylaws entitled six point six, Mixed Use Development. One substituting therefore the revised version, also entitled six point six, Mixed Use Development, and amending the Table of Dimensional and Density Regulations in Section four point three and three by amending the current zoning map with the addition of the Mixed Use Development overlay district map, all on file with the office of the town clerk.
Could you say that ten times fast?
Not really.
You've heard the motion made and seconded under Article twelve. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Lesko.
I move we take up Article thirteen.
The motion's been made and seconded to take up Article thirteen as in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Lesko.
I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaws by inserting a new section to be known as seven A point zero, Medical Marijuana, as a file with the town clerk with the following changes. Delete the heading on each page, draft, Medical Marijuana Ordinance, Hatfield Planning Department, and delete the heading date on each page, one dash seven dash two thousand and fourteen, renumbering the section by deleting ten point zero and inserting seven A point zero in the heading on page one and renumbering all other paragraphs accordingly. Replace the word ordinance with the word bylaw on paragraph one, page two. Delete slash ordinance on paragraph number three, page six, and replace ordinance with bylaw in the heading of page seven.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded under Article thirteen. Is there any discussion? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Boyle.
I move we take up Article fourteen.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article fourteen in your handout. Mr. Boyle.
I move the town vote to amend the bylaws of the town of Hatfield, Section four point zero eight, by deleting twenty dollars and inserting two hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded under Article fourteen. Is there any discussion?
Article four of our town bylaws has to do with use of vehicles. We've had some issues with use of roads that have weight restrictions, and Chief of Police has reported that a fine of twenty dollars has been inconsequential in terms of deterring the misuse of roads during periods of time they're not supposed to be used. So...
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Adamski.
Move to take up Article fifteen.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article fifteen as in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Adamski.
I move the town vote to accept the provisions of General Law, Chapter fifty-nine, Section five, fifty-four clause to exclude personal property value at less than ten thousand dollars from taxation.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded under Article fifteen. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Lesko.
Move we take up Article sixteen.
Second? Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article sixteen as in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Lesko.
I move that the town vote to cease assessing the excises imposed under General Law's Chapter fifty-nine, Section eight A, on certain animals, machinery, and equipment owned by individuals and noncorporate entities principally engaged in agricultural...agriculture.
Second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded under Article sixteen. Is there any discussion? All those...come up to the mic.
How much money is this...are you talking about that we are going to waive?
Somewhere around twelve hundred dollars per year.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Boyle.
I move we take up Article seventeen.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article sixteen...seventeen as in your handout.
I move the town vote to accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter one forty, Section one thirty-nine, so no license fee shall be charged for a dog owned by a person aged seventy years or older who's licensed...who licenses their dogs by March thirty-first.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded under Article seventeen. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Adamski.
I move we take up Article eighteen.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article eighteen as in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Adamski.
I move the town vote to amend the bylaws of the town of Hatfield by raising the fees for dog licenses and revise Section two point zero seven, Subsection C, by deleting said Subsection C licensing and replace it with the language as printed in the town warrant.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded on Article eighteen. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Lesko.
I move we take up Article nineteen.
I'm going to step in the way here for just a second, Mr. Lesko. There is an issue that has come up by accident. There was a petition for an item brought up on number thirty-eight. I feel that should be dealt with by all townspeople, not just at the end of the night. So as moderator, I'm going to take the rare occasion of moving Article thirty-eight up to the forefront. So we're going to take up Article thirty-eight. Do you want to deal with that? Are you going to table that, or the...
The proponent has indicated he's ill and unable to be here.
I'll get to the mic.
The proponent is ill and unable to be here. So I move to table.
Okay. There's no discussion? All those in favor of tabling Article thirty-eight signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. Again, I just say that I rarely ever do this, but I...by accident, that item was brought up at the very last...second to the last item of the night, and I think it affects a majority of the town, and I just needed to bring that up while most people are here in present. So thank you for your patience. Mr. Lesko.
Mr. Moderator. I move we take up Article nineteen.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article nineteen.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Lesko.
I move that the town vote to accept the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-three D, expedited permitting.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded under Article nineteen.
Mark Gillett, Elm Street. Could someone just explain what permitting process we are expediting with this article?
Expediting permitting is that we've agreed to go forward and any state permitting or whatever we've...we're authorizing, the Planning Board and whoever has permitting procedures, that we expedite them in a timely fashion, not months, but in days or weeks. That's basically what we're doing here.
Go ahead.
Adoption creates an expedited local permitting process for any property designated as a priority development site. It requires most local land use permits, not building and not subdivision approvals, to be processed, issued, or denied within a hundred and eighty days.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. Mr. Boyle.
I move we take up Article twenty.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article twenty in your handout.
I move the town vote to transfer and appropriate from free cash twenty-five hundred dollars for a three-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary celebration.
Second.
Hatfield Anniversary Celebration.
Hatfield Anniversary Celebration.
You've heard the motion made and seconded on Article twenty. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Adamski.
Move to take up Article twenty-one.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article twenty-one as in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Adamski.
I move the town vote to create a town hall stabilization fund.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded on Article twenty-one. Is there any discussion?
Mike Cahill, North Street. I guess before I could support the creation of a stabilization fund for town hall renovation, and there's a subsequent article or two that involves funding this stabilization fund, I think the leaders of the community should really share in detail, quite thoroughly, where this renovation project stands and why we would be creating, in effect, what is a savings account and depositing funds into it towards an apparent additional expenditure of money for even further renovations to the town hall. of money for even further renovations to the town hall. So I think the community would at least appreciate some background here as to why and why and where and how.
Please do.
As we covered last year in a variety of Board of Selectmen meetings, and as we covered last town meeting, and in a handout, and some discussion, under the Americans with Disabilities Act, when you make improvements to a facility such that you're spending more than 30% of the assessed value of the building, you're required to make the entire facility ADA compliant. To help us manage the finances of this, and since we approved last time a Phase 1, that is essentially the first floor, and we put in accessible bathrooms, also created some offices, we changed the heights of counters, a variety of things like this. The Phase 1 that we did simply on the first floor triggers the ADA requirements. And so I testified with the Department of Public Safety Architectural Access Board last August, along with our architect, and got two variances. One was a time variance, such that recognizing the case we made, that this is a small community, we don't have a lot of money, and taking on the remainder of the items that are required to make the hall compliant, we'd need some time. So we got a time variance, instead of having to do the whole thing all at once, we got a time variance of five years. That is, the facility needs to be ADA compliant by August of 2018. At the same time, we also got relief from some of the requirements. For example, the front of the building, we're not going to have to change the front of the building to make it ADA compliant. And we also got relief on some of the offices that were downstairs, on the commitment that we were moving them out. For example, the police and fire moving them to the town hall garage emergency service complex. So the notion here is to put some money away over time, such that Phase 2 of the town hall upgrade, to make it ADA compliant, and also we have to comply with the fire code and put in sprinklers, that we set aside a certain amount of funds each year. Now, Phase 2 will largely consist of the elevator, an elevator going up to the top floor and the bottom floor, a single ramp on the south side of the building. Right now, you know, we have two, one going down, one going up. Neither of them meet code. They're the wrong pitch. They're too steep. They have no leveling point in the middle. So there'd be the elevator, a ramp, a sprinkler system, and I think some electrical work on the second floor. So that's what it consists of. And we already have... You're asking us where we are. We have a design. Contractor's estimate is $710,000 for this second phase of the town hall renovation. We have from CPC already, based on a previous action of a town meeting, remaining $163,520 toward ADA compliance, so we can use that toward the elevator and/or the ramp. And we also are proposing here, you'll see in the next article, it's tied to this, Article 22, using $166,000 of our free cash to also put toward that. So we'd have the 167 plus the 164 already toward that 710. So we have a plan, and we're building a kitty to make the impact... To make it least impactful, and doing it over time.
Michael, come on up.
I guess what concerns me is that I'm not sure that the community has committed itself to this quote "second phase" renovation of the town hall. Last year, we committed to a Phase 1. I'm not sure that it was completely clear last year that if we did Phase 1, there was a $710,000 tail to Phase 1. That in committing to do Phase 1, we in effect were committing to the renovations that Jeff was talking about, which would be required by the state for us to comply with ADA accessibility. And I guess what concerns me as a taxpayer is that the town basically went to the state and had a meeting with the Architectural Access Board, submitted the plan, if you will, for going forward on the town hall, and the Architectural Access Board waived the... Are having to do the ADA requirements, the improvements associated with that, for five years. What we did, though, is that we have now agreed with the state to do this $710,000 improvement addition, if you will, the second phase, without town meeting approval. And I think there's something... The sequence there just seems unreasonable. And the state now is under the impression that Hatfield will do that. It has to do it. Because the state has waived us spending that 710 this year, if you will, so that we could go ahead and spend the five and do what we did to the town hall. So I have a concern right now with setting up a savings account to help fund this $710,000 worth of improvements. Before these improvements, this plan, this specific plan, has been approved by town meeting. For example, we're saying that we need an elevator to access the third floor. The third floor of the town hall hasn't been used in nine months. So if we need an elevator to access the third floor, what's going to be in the town... What's going to be on the third floor? I think people need to know that. They need to understand this and approve the plan before we start saving for it. I guess that's my concern.
I would vote against it.
Kathy, in the back.
Hi, Kathy Gao, Depot Road. For anyone that doesn't know, I'm also the curator of the Hatfield Historical Museum. I kind of don't know where to start, but I'll start by saying what is the plan and has been the plan talked about in the town for the last five years, I would say anyway, has been that the historical museum, which has been overcrowded for the last 40 years, has finally been given a place on the second floor of the town hall, or, you know, third floor, whichever you're counting from. And so that has been much discussed. And when the CPA money two or three years ago was voted for the elevator, the plan was and discussed at that time at the town meeting, that one of the big reasons is that it was being supported by all the committees in town was so that the historical museum could go up there, and so that there could be a safe place for the town's collection of its history to be held. Also, I just, you know, to say that, you know, this is kind of coming out of the blue, I don't see that it should be a surprise to anyone, since, you know, the American with Disabilities Act, I think it was passed in like 1975 or something. You know, the town should have made these changes then, and we did not. And we should have made them so many times in the years since, and we have not. And we wouldn't be at this place now where the state was basically saying, "You have to do this because, you know, three years ago..." Or was it two? Three years ago, the town voted down doing the renovation for five or six million dollars, when it would have been much cheaper to do it that way. And they, you know, that was the word all along, all the committee meetings that they had, all the tours that they had of the town hall, saying, you know, "We want to do it this way now, so that we know what it's going to cost. It'll cost us much less than to do it piecemeal over the next so many years." Well, here we are, folks. Now we're doing it piecemeal. And, you know, you can't hide in a vacuum just because we're in Little Hatfield. I mean, there are laws in the state, there are things that need to be done. Not only the town hall, but other buildings in town need to be renovated. I'm glad the school building renovation got passed. But, you know, it's a question of whether or not the town can afford it. That's a question, but it doesn't mean that we can just stick our heads in the sand and say, "Well, we're just not going to do it. And then let's just wait until the building falls down and gets, you know, a yellow string wrapped around it, and we can sell the bricks." Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Pat, you had your hand up earlier.
I don't want to drop the mic. Pat Gohin, Primrose Path. I have a question regarding action which was taken by Town Floor in 2011, and also, again, at the voting box, the ballot box. The town voted on a motion that required two-thirds majority to not pursue the development, if you will, or physical change or whatever, of town hall. That also reached the ballot box, and that was defeated at the ballot box, two to one. My question is, very simply, what impact, if any, and I believe this is probably a question for council, does a pre-existing vote taken have on this discussion? Can we pursue that? Pursue this discussion without negating that vote? Because if that's the precedent we're going to set, ladies and gentlemen, I don't think we want to go down that road. But clearly, that vote has never been negated, and we checked that out yesterday.
I'm sorry, could you please just clarify or repeat, since I haven't been here for the previous years, exactly what that vote was in terms of...
The vote called for the dealing with the... I'm not phrasing it correctly. Reconstruction of town hall, and whatever costs, you know, that action incurred. And by the way, I'm not necessarily saying I'm against that. What I am against is if a pre-existing vote is being ignored.
So generally, when these issues come to vote, or if they come as articles on prior town meetings, what they are is they would be affirmative motions. So a no vote on an election or at town meeting wouldn't preclude the consideration of the motion or the article at a subsequent point. So it doesn't preclude voting for this motion or this article? It would be a different scenario if it had previously been approved and you were trying to then rescind it. But unless there was some prohibitive language in the prior vote that it would... Shall not be considered in the future, I wouldn't be able to think of a reason why you wouldn't be able to vote on it now.
So Consular, if I'm reading you correctly, we do have within our power to ignore prior existing votes?
Yeah, in the sense that...
Well, Pat, I don't think he's saying ignore prior vote. A prior vote was a prior vote, but he doesn't even have at his disposal the wording of that vote, so you're asking him...
The wording that you're referring to is pretty close to being what we need, you know, impacts this discussion. I wouldn't just bring something up and shoot my mouth off about something that I did not clearly check out with the appropriate authority within the town.
Maybe Paul can shed a little light on that as well.
When that vote was taken, there was nothing that would preclude the Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee, whoever, from bringing it back for another vote and giving it another try. It happens in towns all the time. In this particular instance, that was a $5.2 million project. What we're talking about now is a completely different project. We're talking about... In the end, you know, I think what the... I wasn't there, but I'm assuming in the end, folks said, "5.2 million dollars? That's too much. We're looking at, you know, a $1.2 million project versus a $5.2 million project." So they're completely different projects.
You know, maybe it would be... Would have been better if there was a forthright discussion of what action was going to be or you wanted to have taken to negate the prior vote at Town Floor. And clearly, if you were to ask other people here, I'm not sure that they would follow that any more than I did, but maybe they would.
Okay. And then I'm going to ask Sean to weigh in on it from Finance Committee.
If I'm not mistaken, the prior vote was for a debt exclusion, to debt exclude a project to renovate the town hall. And it failed at the ballot box because it was a debt exclusion. Otherwise, it wouldn't have even gone to the ballot box.
It also failed at Town Floor.
Well, I understand that, but it was... The vote that was taken was regarding a 5-point-whatever, $4 million debt exclusion, and this has absolutely nothing to do with a $5.4 million debt exclusion. It just happens to be the same piece of property that we're talking about spending, potentially spending money on. So I just don't see how it's related in any way, any more than if you voted to not build a new elementary school, and then years... A year later, you voted to build a new elementary school. Does that mean you can never build a new elementary school? Because at one time...
And then Town Council has one more piece to weigh in on.
Well, actually, it was just addressed. A vote... A no vote on any warrant article does not preclude that same exact article from showing up at the subsequent town meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I do remember that night, okay? I stood up right where you were standing, and I was one of the many that were against that $5 million project. I was running for selectman that year, and I spoke about not being able to afford it. So when I was elected, the team worked together, the three of us came up with a different plan, had a lot less costly endeavor for the taxpayers in town, I feel. So I know where you're coming from. I was there. I came up, along with these other two gentlemen, for a much smaller amount for basically a hell of a lot better-looking town hall. And as far as... Mr. Cahill, either I was at the wrong meeting or you were, because I distinctively remember last year us telling the whole audience, "Here's the deal. We're going to ask for money for Phase 1, but once we make that commitment, we are committed to doing Phase 2 at some point in time." I know we said it.
John Pease, 2 North Hatfield Road. Just like to address Mr. Gohin's topic for a minute. Think back in the early '70s, we voted to tear down a town barn. Subsequently, the barn that was repaired with town's money several times to use for different things, not the town barn, the old town garage. We had a new town garage up at Straits Road. That turned into the Fatted Calf, when the roof caved in during the snowstorm two years ago. What did we get for monies from that? An article that was voted down, was voted to tear down, but never did. I think we made a lot of money on that deal. We should have been building a safety complex years ago.
Okay, but John, you're ready?
No, no, but that's the same thing. We tied in the new building to the original ambulance building. That was temporary. Now it's permanent.
Right.
So these articles, back and forth, ADA requirements, like two parents. I pushed in a wheelchair.
I remember your father.
Anybody that wants to try those ramps or go someplace else that doesn't have the ramp the right height... ramp the right height, our own house, I knew what it cost to put in one, that's the whole farm, to be ADA, this way, that way, push them on.
And I think the older we all get, we're all having family members in that situation.
But the Hatfield Museum is an excellent resource. A lot of people can't go upstairs. Children that have special needs can't go up to see some of the stuff that's just been, you know, brought up, you know, fixed and everything like that. We should do something. The Hatfield Museum barn, last fall, I was privy to, our veterans from War War II, Korea, as a group, came in and viewed that barn, because they remembered working here in the valley and so forth like that, but some of them couldn't go upstairs.
Right.
So let's, as we say, with Mr. Adamski, you know, it's, let's get it done, you know, it's going to cost one way or the other, but let's not screw around with it. Get it done.
Pat?
I'd like to ask a question. If we create a Town Hall renovation stabilization fund and fund it every year, will we not, or I assume we will have to vote to spend that money? It just doesn't automatically get spent. Am I correct? That's the clarification I wanted to make.
Very good. Larry? And then we're going to move this.
Article 21, 2, 3, and 4, of course, related. I don't speak against anything that anyone said about the value of this project, or even questioning the process, but philosophically, I wonder, maybe Finance Committee has this as well as the selectmen, why are we going the stabilization route rather than just coming to us taxpayers at town meeting to discuss Phase Two for funding? Because what bothers me about it is you're taking away $166,000 from free cash to fund 22, Article 22, then you're going to take another $20,000 from Article, for Article 24 to fund furnishings, and I just think, wouldn't it be, and again, this could be a philosophical argument, but maybe you have a rationale, wouldn't it be better to leave our so-called rainy day fund intact as free cash that we could draw upon as needed, and the Finance Committee has some authority in that, rather than create another fund, which is, we've never had a second stabilization fund in this town, that may actually tie up some of our free cash? That it would be a little more complicated if we had a dyke break, or something that we needed, some money, and it would be tied up in the Town Hall stabilization fund rather than the free cash?
Okay. And you, sir, you put your hand up earlier.
My name is Leslie A. Labarge, I live on Elm Street in Hatfield. I was on a committee about 25 years ago called the Hatfield Handicap Access Committee. That's when they built the ramp, the one they have now. And there was a little controversy about an elevator to go upstairs. As far as we knew, that elevator was coming. Now, that was 25 years ago. Now, as far as using the third floor, the third floor has been used, and it hasn't been nine months. We've had meetings up there, all right? But Kathy Dowd has done a hell of a, a hell of a great job on this, on our museum. We want to go upstairs, want to go upstairs in Town Hall, the third floor. We want that elevator, all right? Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to move the question here. All those in favor, excuse me, this is going to be a two-thirds majority, all those on Article 21, in favor of Article 21, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
Got to do a count. You didn't have it written on there as two-thirds, but, okay, he's alluded, this on 21. Okay, we got to do a count, so all those in favor, please, we're on 21. This is 21.
This is just-
This is 21, to create the stabilization. Okay. All those in favor, please stand. This is a no-brainer.
For some reason, most recent IGR, DOR is the one that can creation of a specialized stabilization.
No, that's okay. I appreciate your feedback. You're doing well. They already went through them. 114 in favor, seven against, motion carries. Mr. Lesko.
I move we take up Article 22.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 22, is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Lesko.
I move that the town vote to transfer and appropriate from free cash $166,674 to the Town Hall Stabilization Fund.
You've heard the motion made and seconded under Article 22, is there any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Boyle.
I move this article be tabled.
Motion's been made and seconded to table Article 23, is that correct?
Correct.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Moderator.
Mr. Adamski.
I move we take up Article 24.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 24, is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Adamski.
I move the town vote to transfer and appropriate $20,000 from free cash to fund the new, to fund new furnishings and equipment for the Town Hall.
Motion's been made and seconded under Article 24, is there any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Lesko.
I move we table Article 25.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to table Article 25. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Boyle.
I move we take up Article 26.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 26, is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Boyle.
I move the town vote to create another post-employment benefit trust fund.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded under Article 26, is there any discussion? Why don't we give an explanation?
All right, I'll do it. Like Articles 15 and 16, there were several recommendations that came out of an audit that we had this past year. One, addressing it here, was to remind that credit evaluators are looking at how communities are managing their long-term liabilities. It's Gatsby 45, as some of you will understand. The Standards Board requires that communities recognize their post-employment benefits as liability in their financial statements. Ours currently is about $2.6 million, and as the auditor pointed out, you have a workforce with an average age of 50, so that, that number's going to grow. So establishing the fund, we understand, will help us with our credit evaluation and so lower, help lower, the cost of capital. Now, in this particular version, we're not even putting any money, we're just putting any money into it as yet, we're just establishing the fund.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Adamski.
Move to take up Article 27.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 27, is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Adamski.
I vote the town vote to replace a number of water meters by appropriating a sum of $20,000, a portion as follows: $10,000 to be appropriated and transferred from Waters Enterprise Fund, and $10,000 to be appropriated and transferred from the Sewer Enterprise Fund.
Second. You've heard the motion made and seconded under Article 27, is there any discussion? Paul?
Do we have an approximate number of water meters and the cost of a water meter?
Phil?
It was in our capital plan that was developed by Comprehensive Environmental to replace 600 water meters. This is the third year into the process. We're replacing 200 a year at the cost of $100 each.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Lesko.
I move we take up Article 28.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 28, is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Lesko.
I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $200,000, and to meet said appropriation, authorize the treasurer to borrow under and consistent with Mass General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 7 or 8, and slash or any other source of authority to replace a section of North Street Sewer.
Motion's been made and seconded under Article 28, is there any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Lesko.
I move we take up Article 29.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 29, is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Lesko.
I move that the town vote to amend the bylaws of the town of Hatfield, adopting a hazardous materials and waste recovery bylaw as printed in the town warrant.
Thank you for not reading all that. Motion's been made and seconded under Article 29, is there any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Boyle.
I move we take up Article 30.
Motion's, motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 30, is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Boyle.
I move the town vote to appropriate to reserve or reserve from the community preservation annual revenues in the amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for committee administrative expenses, community preservation projects, and other expenses in fiscal year 2014, with each item to be considered a separate appropriation. Appropriations to leave unchanged committee administrative expenses at $6,930, reserves to change historic reserves, resource reserves from $13,680 to $25,845, to change community housing reserve from $13,680 to $25,845, to change open space reserve from $13,680 to $25,845, to change budgeted reserve from $90,090 to $173,985.
Second.
You've heard the motion made and seconded under Article 30, is there any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Adamski.
I move we take up Article 31.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 31, is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Adamski.
I move the town vote to appropriate or reserve from the community preservation annual refunds our revenues in the amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for committee administrative expenses, community preservation projects, and other expenses in fiscal year 2015, each item to be considered a separate appropriation. Appropriations fiscal year 2015, estimated revenues for committee administrative expenses, $8,045. Reserves fiscal 15, estimated revenues for historic resource reserve, $16,091. Fiscal year 2015, estimated revenues for community housing reserve, $16,091. Fiscal 2015, open space reserve, $16,091, and budgeted reserves for 15, 100, $104,588.
Motion's been made and seconded under Article 31, is there any discussion? Michael?
Bob Wagner here. Just wondered if you could give us his annual update on the Community Preservation Fund. Is he not here?
I couldn't imagine Bob Wagner missing a town meeting.
Bob Wagner, Lindsay Road. There is a handout in the back providing everyone with an update on our funding situation and project activities. The previous article that just passed adjusts our fiscal year budget that we passed last year to reflect the fact that we received $129,225 from the state Community Preservation Trust Fund, 100% match, which we, when we, last year, voted on our budget, we had to expect about a 25% match, so we received significantly more. This Article 31 is for the upcoming fiscal year, and again, we have to do the same thing. We have to estimate, we have a good estimate from our good friend, Mr. Lyons, on approximately how much we'll raise locally, but what we have to do is use an estimate of how much the state trust fund match might be, and in this case, they're recommending a 30%. So the, these numbers here reflect a combination of the funds we'll receive from our local, our local receipts, as well as then the state match. I suspect that in all likelihood, we're going to get a more significant match from the state when all is said and done, and we'll be at this again next year, adjusting our budget upward to reflect the fact that we've received more money from the state in a match.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Lesko.
I move we take up Article 32.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 32, is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Lesko.
I move the town vote pursuant to the recommendation of the Hatfield Community Preservation Committee to appropriate and transfer from the Community Preservation Budgeted Reserve Account the sum of up to $74,182 to support the completion of the inventory management and preservation project over a three-year period to preserve, rehabilitate, and restore the Hatfield Historical Museum collection under the direction of the Hatfield Historical Society. Said funds to be expended under the direction of the Community Preservation Committee.
Second.
You've heard the motion made and seconded under Article 32, is there any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Boyle.
I move we take up Article 33.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 33, is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Boyle.
I move the town vote pursuant to the recommendation of the Hatfield Community Preservation Committee to appropriate and transfer from Community Preservation Budgeted Reserve Account the sum of $5,000 for feasibility study to rehabilitate and restore the Prospect Court Bridge for future recreational use under the direction of the Board of Selectmen, said funds to be expended under the direction of the Community Preservation Committee.
Second.
One little correction on that, Jeff, that Lydia was pointing out, it's up to 5,000, not 5,000, it's up to.
I'm seeing, sorry.
Okay, you've heard the article made and seconded under Article 33, is there any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Adamski.
Move to take up Article 34.
Motion's made and seconded to take up Article 34, is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Adamski.
I move the town vote pursuant to the recommendation of the Hatfield Community Preservation Committee to appropriate and transfer from the Community Preservation, Community Housing Resources Reserve Account the sum of $47,981 to preserve and support catalog housing for the elderly through the replacement of windows at the facility under the direction of the Hatfield Housing Authority. Said funds to be expended under the direction of the Community Preservation Committee.
You've heard the, you guys going to second that?
Second.
You've heard the motion made and seconded under Article 34, is there any discussion? In the back. Michael?
Michael Mendick from Scotland Road. I have been the director of the Housing Authority for the past 27 years. The complex was built in 1972, offering 44 one-bedroom apartments for elderly and handicap residents. Hatfield residents have preference in new tenant selection. Approximately 25% of the tenants have been Hatfield residents- Approximately 25% of the tenants have been Hatfield residents before they moved in. The state of Massachusetts has offered us very little money for rehabbing and upkeeping the facility. We operate on a strict budget. Roof repairs, windows, exterior doors, kitchens, and baths all need replacement or updating. In May of 2013, we were notified by the Department of Housing and Community Development that we would be awarded $48,544.19 for selective window replacement. Unfortunately, this is only enough funding to replace approximately 50% of the windows. The current windows are 42-years-old. They're wooden windows, which need paint. New window balances are difficult to operate and are definitely not energy-efficient. We are seeking CPA funding for approximately one-half of the required amount to complete the project totally, as we do not know when we'd be receiving any more funds from Department of Housing and Community Development. The funding does not benefit any one individual, but is for the good of the town and its elderly and handicap residents. Thank you.
Any other discussion? You've heard the mo, you, excuse me. All those in favor of Article 34, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Moderator.
Mr. Lesko.
I move we take up Article 35.
Second? Second? Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 35 is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Lesko.
I move the town vote pursuant to the recommendation of the Hatfield Community Preservation Committee will appropriate and transfer from the Community Preservation Budgeted Reserve Account the sum of $45,000 to be used for acquisition and related closing costs, related closing and legal costs to acquire and preserve for preservation purposes under Chapter 44B, 32 plus minus acres in fee simple interest or less. Two parcels of forest land along Chestnut Mountain Road, map 208, Parcels 8 and 11. The Board of Selectmen are authorized to accept property interest in both parcels, which shall be held under the care, custody, management, and control of the Conservation Commission under the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 8C. Any said properties acquired in fee simple by the town will be protected with a perpetual conservation restriction, meeting the requirements of Mass. General Laws, Chapter 44B, Section 12, and Mass. General Laws, Chapter 184. Said funds are to be expended under the direction of the Community Preservation Committee.
Second.
You've heard the motion made and seconded under Article 35. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Moderator.
Mr. Boyle.
I move we take up Article 36.
Motion's made and seconded to take up Article 36 is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Boyle.
I move the town vote to authorize revolving funds for certain town departments under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2014, in terms of the article.
You've heard the motion made and seconded under Article 36. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Adamski.
Look to take up Article 37.
Motion's made and seconded to take up Article 37 is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Adamski.
I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $9,164,795 for the consistent, with the separate purposes and separate line items set forth in the version of the ninth fiscal year 2015 budget prepared by the Finance Committee dated April 22, 2014, on file with the town clerk, and to meet said appropriations as listed below in your article.
Okay, this is the, this is the budget that we opened for discussion. On page two of your handout is where it starts with line number one through line number 33, and we just usually take a few minutes so you can peruse through it and see if anyone has any questions. And then we'll look on the next page from 34 to 59, and again, if someone has a question backwards, I'll certainly go back. Carrie? Yes, they have some adjustments, two adjustments to make. Do you want to wait just for a minute, Carrie, because it might affect that? No, I think the line 35 needs to be amended. Is that true? No.
Just needs to be read.
Okay. Why don't you read what line 35 is supposed to be? I guess it's correct in this handout. Is that true?
No.
Okay.
No. Line 35, sorry. We had to make a slight adjustment to line 35, which is a fire department and emergency management. We needed to add $4,000 to the expense, expense line of that, of that. It should read $30,330.
And you want to say what that's for? That's?
Yeah, it's, we had forgotten to include it's for Scott Air Packs that the fire department is going to be replacing. Hope that's right. I'm looking for Bill to nod. Yeah.
Okay, and then when you look down, you'll see there's two line 55s. That was just an error in the typo, so the Board of Health line is for this purposes of this time only is going to be called 55A. So they're both still, each a line, but we can't call them both 55. Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to amend line item 55A to increase the salary and decrease the expense by $10,000.
We need that in writing up here. Let's see, can somebody bring Cory a pad or a paper to put that down? Well, we got to read it first. And as we're going through this, we can take a look at the next page and just see if there's any questions. Yes, Carrie, I, I'll just deal with that motion and. Okay, there's a motion made to amend line item 55A, which is written as 55 here under the Board of Health, to increase the salary and decrease the expense by $10,000. The chair would get $8,270. The two other members would each get $7,970. Is that each or combined? Each, okay. And level funding our budget, just switching it around. Is there a second on this? Okay. Is there any discussion? I'll read it again.
No, there's no way I heard this right, that they're increasing their salaries $10,000.
To increase the salary and decrease the expense by $10,000.
And then what, so in other words, the chairman is now going to make $8,200.
$8,270.
And each member is going to make $7,000?
$9,700.
This would be the most outrageous thing that we vote on tonight. There is not a Board of Health in the Commonwealth, in New England, maybe in the United States of America, that gets this kind of salary for volunteer officials. This is just unbelievable.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Okay. Please, go ahead.
I'd just like to comment. The Board of Health, I'm also on the Board of Health, and to say that it's ludicrous and everything else is an understatement. The amount of work that we do and. Okay, the amount of work that we do throughout the year, I mean, we're here to serve the public, serve our community. We're safe certified. We deal with housing certification, septic systems, Title V inspections, perk test, we also witness perk tests. We do housing inspections, complaints, motel housing, et cetera. We do schools, restaurants, motels. We go and we inspect all these commercial kitchens also. We also issue permits for septic removal, refuge removal, trucking waste, restaurant licenses. We attend meetings, many, many meetings throughout the year. We attend seminars throughout the year to better ourself and to get more up to date on all the different laws and bylaws that the State Department of Public Health requires us to do. Okay, it's not something that we are doing on our own, but we're required to do that. That's what they tell us we have to do. So when it comes down to what do we do, okay, we do a lot. We hold hearings on complaints. We attend coalition meetings. Hampshire County funding received goes towards hand sanitizer to schools, libraries, town buildings. We also investigate dog bites, bat bites. Had an issue this Sunday that we just dealt with. A person in town got bit by a bat. We had to take about four hours of work, work with the police department, the individual, call veterinarian clinics to arrange for the bat to be serviced, to be sent to Boston to check it out, see if there was rabies. And by the way, it came back negative, so the person is very lucky that he doesn't have to continue to go through the rabies shots. But these are the things that we do on a daily, day in and day out basis. We're there 24/7. We deal with public notifications, public warnings, tripoli, mosquito warnings. We attend tobacco, set tobacco regulations. And we also were very instrumental in the H1N1 inoculation three years ago, if everyone remembers that. And we are a professional and very valuable resource to the community. So as far as to say we don't do anything, I think you're totally wrong, but this is for us. And there's a whole nother list of items that I don't think everybody wants to hear, but we're required by the state to do this. Couple years, or last year, we asked for a health, a health assistant or a health agent, okay? We asked for about 1,000 hours, okay, which is 20 hours a week for a health agent, because that's what was recommended. But then when it came down to get the money, we only received enough for 471 hours, which is about a third, okay? We asked for $31,000 at that time, and we were given $10,000 or $12,000, I should say. So at that point in time, I know I have talked to many health agents around the area, and none of them want to work one day a week or on as-needed basis. And that's the problem that we're having, because it's as an as-needed basis when something comes up. They can't guarantee they're going to be here. So we have carried the ball last year. There's no, we did it for the same salary we did last year, but the number of hours we put in were numerous, numerous of hours.
Okay.
So that's, that's where we stand.
And Daryl, you wanted to?
So I, as a finance committee, I just want to respond. This was, they did present this budget to us in preliminary discussions. We did talk about it. The issue we as a finance committee had was, yes, we did approve last year, I believe it was $12,000 for them to go out and assist, to solicit some help, to take on some of the tasks that they're doing. And Ed just stated, he talked to some people, but there was no actual attempt to send out an RFR or an RFP to try and officially go out and get work. And we looked at that as a finance committee and said, okay, we'll put that money back in this year, so you can at least attempt to go out and try to get somebody to do it. I mean, I don't, I'm not doubting Ed and what he said to the people he talked to, but from our perspective, they did not go through official channels, put an ad in the paper, put an official RFR out. And so therefore, when they presented their budget to us this year, we decided to level fund it, keep it the same, keep their salary the same, and give them another opportunity to go out and solicit help, which other towns do. Other towns have health agents to go out and do much of the work that Ed was talking about. So, and I'm not discounting the work that they did and the amount of hours they put in. I'm certain they did that, but from our perspective, that's how we saw it.
Okay, so this is only on the amendment. Louise?
Well, I thought I had two questions, but maybe I really only have one. Is the funding is part of that $18,000, the expense account for the health agent? Because I was wondering how the Board of Health was going to survive with an expense account of only $8,000 when they had $18,000 this year. So that's really the funding for the health agent? Okay. And I would just secondly like to say, I acknowledge that they have huge responsibilities, and the state changes those frequently, but there are many town officials in the same shoes, and everybody else, if I understand correctly, is receiving a 1.5% increase, including full-time employees.
I'll get you just a second, Sean.
Line two, select board.
Wait, wait, we're only talking about.
I'm referring to this amendment. Just in point of comparison, select board, $2,000 a member. Line 12, assessors, $2,000 for the chairman, $1,600 for the members. Planning board, line 25, $500 for each member. School committee, they manage over $4 million of our money, $126 for each member. Town volunteers, elected officials, do this for something called service, not money. The moderator probably gets a dollar to stand up there.
Oh, no, come on, I get $79.
$79. It's just a different attitude to do this work. Nobody's questioning how much work the Board of Health does. I never questioned that litany of tasks that you said. I know it's grown over the years, but that's why you wanted to be on the Board of Health, to do that work. That's why the selectmen want to be selectmen, and Joe wants to be the moderator. So we cannot turn these positions into money-making jobs, especially with an increase of, well, what was the increase? A 50% increase, right? So please, remember when we're voting on the amendment, this was not recommended by the finance committee. They're probably as shocked as I am about it, but are more diplomatic, and that's it.
And you had to comment? No, nope.
I just want to suggest as well that as a matter of process and procedure for a town meeting, that we might just want to think about inviting, whether we want to invite all elected officials to sort of debate their salaries on town meeting floor. Because we haven't really, so we've not suggested that as a possibility for other folks, and I, I'm not questioning whether town meeting has the right to do that or the ability to adjust salaries, because they certainly do for elected officials, but it has not been our standard operating procedure, and other folks have asked for increases over the years, and we have not encouraged them to come to town meeting floor to make those requests. So just as a matter of, something to think about, is that a policy that we want to have, where we invite all the elected officials to essentially make requests for their own salaries on town meeting floor?
Okay, one more, Ed, and then.
Joe, yes, I'd like to also add, last year, year before, treasurers got an increase in raise. Our job is basically the same, okay? We're there to serve the public. The treasurer's there to serve the public. The clerk's there to serve the public. The tax collector's there to serve the public. They all got increases, and there's a lot of other departments besides the Board of Health that do a lot for the town, and nothing has been done for years except for a one and a half or whatever the percentage that's given outright. and a half or whatever the percentage that's given outright. But when it comes down to a service to the community, that's what we're talking about. We're not just talking a gift anymore, we're talking hundreds of hours, if not thousands of hours, okay? The amount of time that we do put in.
Okay. I'll do one more, and then we're going to move to question.
Mr. Moderator, Ron Punska, Elm Street. Normally, I don't agree with Mr. Grossman, but he's, and he's much more eloquent than I am, but I have to agree with Mr. Berry, that this is not the place on the town meeting to discuss salaries. That salary issue and expenses has already been discussed and developed with the select board and with the finance committee. Thank you.
Okay. So let's move the question. This is not on the budget, this is strictly on the amendment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay.
Nay.
Motion fails. So now we're back on the budget itself. We were up to the third page. Was there a change on the social security line, Daryl, or not?
No.
No, this is written as correct. Oh, I'm sorry, I did, I promised you. I'm bad. Thank you.
Carrie Flaherty, Perrose Path. Mr. Moderator, I move to amend line item number 56, the Council on Aging, by increasing the salary to $54,638.90.
Okay. I need that in writing. Okay, so the amendment is to move line 56, Council on Aging, by increasing the salary to $54,638.90. Is there a second? Second? Okay. Is there any discussion?
I'm speaking as Chair of the Council on Aging Board. Need to point out that this is not... Okay, now?
There you go.
Okay, Amanda, okay, there I am. Amanda Ziegmont, Oak Avenue, in Hatfield, Chair of the Council on Aging Board. I just want to point out that this is not an elected position. The line item 56 is the salaries of both the Director and the Office Assistant. The Director's salary is a grade nine position, $23.98 plus 1.5% COLA per hour, which will bring it to $50,626.58, including the Office Assistant, which would bring this up to The Council on Aging Board has recommended a salary adjustment for the Director according to the Human Resources Committee's Classification Plan for FY14. The comparable range is 1962 to 23.98. We're recommending the rate of 23.98 based on the following. The Director has been employed in this position for 25 years, supervises seven part-time employees, 50 volunteers in multiple programs, activities on a daily basis, secures grant funding for our department, along with the daily operation of the Council on Aging Office, including both the transportation and nutrition programs. In 1990, Hatfield's population was 3,343, consisting of 640 residents over 60, or 19%. In 2013, population is 3390, a difference of 50, consisting of 986 residents over 60, or 29%. It's an increase of 200, oh, 350, sorry. According to the State Elder Affairs, this number will increase significantly, significantly over the next 10 years, and we as a community need to know that as this number increases, so do the responsibilities and duties of this position. This position was not adjusted to the comparable rate in FY12, when other departments got their salary adjustments by the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee.
Okay. Any discussion further? We're on the motion here.
On the numbers in the budget reflect a cost of living increase, and they reflect the, a number that is consistent with the grade our Human Resource Advisory Committee has established for that particular position. It's within that range currently.
Daryl, did you have anything?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I was just going to state, it kind of goes back to our previous discussion. I'm a little uncomfortable discussing salaries here on town floor. They for sure did bring a request for salaries forward to us, along with other, along with everybody else. So I, from our point of view, it's a little uncomfortable discussing it here on town floor, and we did, it's the selectmen that actually make final decision on as far as salaries, and I was on the Human Resource Advisory along with Fran and Colleen, and there, the, the range that was in there is where was correct, as far, you know, she was within that range, so. Or they were within, those two positions were within the range on the scale.
Okay. Any further discussion in the back?
The Council on Aging falls under the Board of Selectmen, and since FY12, when these salary adjustments were made for all the other areas except the Council on Aging Director, there has been no discussion with the Council on, with the Board of Selectmen. We've been level funded.
You guys want to weigh in on that, or? Do you want to talk on that?
Well.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? All right. We're going to go to, the amendment is to change the, increase the salary line, not on the budget, just the amendment.
The money has to be where it's going to come from, either taxation, stabilization, or buy free cash, so they're going to have to state one or the other, one of the three.
Well, this is the amendment we're voting on at this point, right? Can they change that?
Louis, do you think they can amend this one, or do we have to vote on it?
All right, and then you've got to come up and amend this. And the reason we do this very carefully is because every time we do something, we start setting a precedent for future times. So we have to be careful as to what we always did before under town rules, and what we're going to be doing next time. All right. All those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay.
Nay.
Motion fails. We're back on the budget, line 88. Excuse me?
Please.
You want to come? Okay. All those in favor, please stand at our counters. Okay. We've got to do the, those in favor again. He does have a conflict, and he brought it up forward, and I appreciate that totally. So let's see, who, Michael, would you care to do the count for him, for Bob? Sure. Sure. All those stand again that just did. This is, this is in favor of the motion. And Mr. Best, so thank you for bringing that up. Okay, there are 64 noes and 40 yeses, the motion fails. Now we're back on the budget. The last page we didn't get to was page, was the last page, line item 88 to 108. Okay. All those in favor of Article 38, that was 38, correct? I got to get this right, we did so much talking. 37, the budget, right?
Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor of Art? Yes, sir.
I think we actually went through the 60, 87, and called for review, but there was no discussion.
Oh, I was leaving it open for, if you want to have something to discuss, please do. I was, I was, the whole budget, at this point, in prior years, we would go the first page, second page, the third page, and then I had earlier, I said if you want to go back on a line item, please do. Okay. All those in favor of Article 37 signify by saying aye. Any opposed, nay. Article carries. You're on. Mr. Lesko.
I move to take up Article 39.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 39, as in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Lesko.
I moved at the town vote to hear any and all reports which have to do with the welfare of the town.
You've heard the article made and seconded under Article 39. This is, when I do like to take just a moment, I know Jeff's got a few things to say, but I always ask for a moment of silence. First of all, I'd like to remember that in the daily paper, we see many World War II and Korean vets passing all too fast. I would just like to say we have your gratitude. We're all here safely today because of your commitment and sacrifice. And for all those who have passed in our town, as well as those that are currently serving in our armed forces, may they truly be safe. So if we can just take a moment to honor them. Thank you. Just a short moment, but for a lot of years that a lot of people have committed their lives to. Jeff, you had something to cover.
Tonight, we bring to a close, I think it was an excellent year for Hatfield, and after tonight, I think we're on track for another good year. We've completed several very important projects and have others underway, ranging from recreation projects like a basketball court on the old Milkman School property, park design underway for former site of Smith Academy, hiking trail on the mountain. Got a number of infrastructure projects completed and in work, completed the co-location of our emergency services, folks in the building behind Town Hall, the former Town Hall garage. We've got the first phase of the water transmission line underway. We have first phase of the Town Hall renovation complete. We are and remain successful because of our people, and that's really what I wanted to focus on. And as I wrap up my tour here as Chair this year of the Board of Selectmen, I just wanted to say a few words. Town employees have kept our water safe, they plowed our roads, they maintained our, maintained our structures, responded to fires, injury, illness, kept the activities, administrative activities on tack, on track. And we have many volunteers that we've talked about, hit on that tonight, who've staffed the various boards and committees without any composition, and it says a lot about the spirit of folks here in town. But at the risk of signifying, mentioning a few names and leaving out some, someone, I do want to recognize five individuals by name, for their long and distinguished service to Hatfield. One, Mr. Stanley Sodowsky. Stanley is retiring after 28 years. But it's yet to be seen how far he gets away. Mr. Greg Gagnon stepped down as our ambulance director after 25 years here in town. Mr. Bill Young, Highway Superintendent, Transfer Station Head, Tree Warden, other things, stepped down after 15 years. Our colleague, Mr. Janet Damski, to my right here, leaving after two terms on the Board of Selectmen. An individual who's always had a genuine interest in people, and always had a common sense approach to issues, and we'll certainly miss him. And finally, I'd ask Mr. Kenneth Belice if he'd please stand. For over 55 years, Mr. Belice has served the veterans in this community, their families, and the community at large. He's done that in a number of ways, perhaps most visibly to all of you, orchestrating military honors at wakes, funerals, Veterans Day ceremonies, Memorial Day, all the visits to the cemeteries, proceedings at Town Center. And for his long and distinguished service in honoring those who have served this country, Board of Selectmen is very honored to dedicate this year's town report to Mr. Belice. Congratulations.
Just before I dissolve this, I do want to specially thank the finance committee. We've been through, as I said in the beginning, we all know, some very tough economic times. For a little town like the Little Engine That Could, they did carry us through, and they continue to do so. So I need to say thank you to them. And one more is to our new, I'll be with you in a moment, is to our new town clerk. This is her first full meeting, and she's done a beautiful job. Thank you. And Bobby, you had a question? And Bobby, you had a question?
Bobby Betzel, Pantry Road. Just want to speak briefly about the park that Jeff had mentioned. Over the last couple of years, this project has been going, ongoing. For those that don't remember, it was approved two years ago as a CPA project at town meeting. We are nearing completion, and the finishing touches will be going on in the next couple of weeks. I'd like to briefly take the moment to thank a few people and a few groups. First, Community Preservation, the Recreation Department, the DPW, and specifically the Highway Department, the Fire Department, three local businesses that contributed greatly to the project, Allstate's Materials Group, Thera Excavating, and Omasa Landscaping, and then specifically the volunteers from within the community who have been down there working. We currently have over 300 volunteer hours into that project, which, as everyone knows, without the volunteer hours, that project wouldn't have happened. As we complete the project here, I would like to announce tonight and invite everyone, we will be holding a grand opening down at the park on Saturday, June 7th, at 11:00 a.m. to officially open it and unveil it to the town. So I'd like to invite everyone to attend that day, and thank everyone for their help in the project.
Thank you, Bobby. We do have a great little town. I want to say thank you very much. Remember to vote when you do, it'll be at the Town Hall. They've got their new room set up, and Lydia's got a little way set up to keep the flow going quite nicely, and you'll get to see what they've done in there. So thank you for coming, we totally appreciate it, and I hereby call this meeting dissolved.